This regular meeting of the Board of Education for September 25th, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin in the back attending all regular Board meetings. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language in which they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they will be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Hola y muy buenas tardes, me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicios de interpretación en español al fondo si es que necesitan. Buenas noches.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chao, buito, quíjive. I'm Hwang, I'm a Vietnamese translator. If anyone needs me, thank you.
Hello, my name is Anya. I speak Russian. I'll be your translator in Russian. Thank you.
Good evening, directors, to our audience here in attendance and watching at home. We were able to get warmed up with a wonderful performance by our students at Lent Elementary. I want to acknowledge our Principal Richard Smith, our new Principal here to Portland Public Schools. So I want to recognize the students and our Principal for being here this evening. We're going to do one more applause, but let's do one now also. I can't think of a better way to honor and acknowledge the fact that we're kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month, which actually runs mid-September through mid-October. A week ago Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate with thousands of community members here across the street at the Moda Center where we were able to celebrate with Latino families and community and had the chance to be invited to make remarks to the crowd. I want to thank Consul General of Mexico for El Grito, which is the annual commemoration of this proclamation of independence. And more than anything, I would like to share that as the first leader of the public schools in Portland, as a Latin American leader, I feel very proud to see our students celebrating and affirming their culture, their traditions, their customs, their dance. And for the viewing audience, I think they're going to do one quick short number so everybody gets a sense of what they were able to perform with us earlier. So, thank you.
From Colombia, it is a happy song about enjoying life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping. This dance is called "La Botella," the music is inspired with the rhythms of Colombia. It's a happy song to enjoy life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping. Thank you.
From Colombia, it is a happy song about enjoying life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping. La botella, this dance is called "La Botella," the music is inspired with the rhythms of Colombia. It's a happy song to enjoy life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping. Thank you.
From Colombia, it is a happy song about enjoying life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping. La botella, this dance is called "La Botella," the music is inspired with the rhythms of Colombia. It's a happy song to enjoy life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping.
From Colombia, it is a happy song about enjoying life, so let's all enjoy it together by clapping. Thank you. In closing, I would like to thank our Superintendent, our Principal from Lent Elementary, and our Dr. Kenya Marquez.
Thank you to everyone and we want to tell you some heritage of the Hispanic kids so they learn a little bit about that. So, they are going to say the name and what do they, in which school, where are Lent, except in some kids that are also PPS and some heritage.
My name is Ariana.
Something that the Hispanic word gave to this word is the...
Vanilla?
Vanilla, la vanilla. Without us, you wouldn't have vanilla. So then, my name is...
My name is Rosa.
And something that we brought to this word is the flower called...
Ponsetia?
Ponsetia or Nochebuena. She's Camila and she was going to say that. Something that we brought to the word is salsa and she told me that he's that fan salsa.
Hi, my name is Adriana, I go to Lent School and an important part of Hispanic heritage for me is corn.
Because corn gives us food, good food.
My name is Mariah.
Something that we have from Argentina is...
Tango.
So my name is...
Hi, my name is Samuel Zamora, I go to Harrison Park School and family values and love of dance.
There is something that we brought to this word.
Hi, my name is Angelica Royo and I go to Mount Hood Community College and something that my heritage brought is the music and the beautiful people.
Hi, my name is Joselyn, I go to Lent School and a part of history for me is Salvador Family Lover.
Love, love from Salvador and you told me pupusas, right?
Hi, my name is Kiana and I go to Lent School and a colored art of... and we eat chocolate.
So we brought the chocolate.
Hi, my name is Sophia and I go to Lent School and an important part of Hispanic heritage for me is pupusas.
That is delicious, huh?
My name is Sydney and I represent the school of Atkinson and something that Mexico brought was tomatoes.
And Jesua and his family is from Michoacan and he bring a lot of beautiful dances and love for everybody to share. And the last one. Oh. And they, well, I'm the last one then. I'm the leader, Dr. Kenya Marquez of Lent. Thank you for, everybody for being here. And one thing that we share with this word is el Dia de Muertos, is the Day of Death, and it's not just like cocoa makeup. It's the love for the people that is coming back. November 1st is the babies and the people that die in the accidents and November 2nd is everybody that died because they were old. So that is what we brought to this culture is welcoming the dead people that comes back to us only for two days and they will have to pack everything because they walk away for one full year. Thank you, everybody. Gracias.
Again, in closing, we would like to thank our Superintendent, our Principal from Lent Elementary, and Dr. Kenya Marquez, and all the children and family for making this program together. Thank you very much.
Thank you again to our students and families for their support in continuing these traditions. I think the board of education has a related resolution. Next.
Thank you, everybody. So, we're now going to...
If the parents want to stay... if we could ask them to stay. If the parents want to stay... I'm trying to say, yeah, to stay for a while. Yep, don't particularly hear that. It's too bad.
Okay, so we're now going to consider Resolution Number 5727, a resolution proclaiming the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools, and I'm going to ask Director Espaza Brown to read it.
Okay, let me say a little bit in Spanish. As the first Latin American member in this board, I am proud of my culture and the children here at Lent, who are here today to celebrate this month. And then I'm going to read the proclamation in English and I know that there is an interpreter back there that perhaps can help the parents understand what our message is here tonight. Hispanic Heritage Week, which began in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, was expanded to National Heritage, Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan and enacted into law in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th, the day which represents the anniversary of independence of five Latino-American countries. No matter the term one chooses to use, whether it be Hispanic, Latino, Latinx, or Chicano-Chicana, we speak of people whose history is rich with those who have positively influenced and enriched our nation, our society, our region, our state, and our schools through their entrepreneurship, commitment to community service, deep values of justice and liberty, and social and cultural life. Hispanic and Latinos have made profound contributions and continue to make advances in education, medicine, art, culture, and public service, and been a consistent and vital influence in our nation's growth and prosperity. More than 16% of enrolled students in the Portland Public Schools are Hispanic or Latino. Over 8% of our Latino employees contribute to the accomplishment of PPS's mission. So understanding Hispanic-Latino history is an important part of celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Portland Public Schools has a racial education equity policy that states our commitment to affirmatively overcoming the educational barriers that have resulted in persistent, unacceptable achievement gap for students of color. And to give each student the opportunity and support to meet his or her highest potential, closing that opportunity gap while raising achievement for all students is the top priority of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and all district staff. The Portland Public Schools Board of Education believe each and every student is to be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures and language, ideas, beliefs, and values within a school community. The Portland Public School Board of Education hereby promotes September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages staff, students, and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and economic contributions of Hispanics to our Oregon and the United States through culturally relevant activity and to learn from the past and understand the experiences that have shaped these United States. The Superintendent shall work with all schools in the district to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month through culturally relevant lessons and activities. And thank you for starting us off so beautifully tonight with your lovely performance that we're so proud of you. Muchas gracias. Bienvenidos.
Yes, do we have a motion for Resolution 5727? Director Espaza Brown moves and Director Brim Edwards seconds. Ms. Hewson, is there any public comment? Okay, any board discussion? Okay, the Board will now vote on Resolution 5727. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, indicate by saying no. Student Representative...
Yes.
Resolution 5727 is approved by a vote of 6 to 0 with Student Representative Paisler voting yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to provide a quick overview of the business the Board will be conducting for the rest of this evening. We'll begin with student and public comment and then follow with Superintendent's report. We'll then consider an alternate contracting method for Kellogg and Benson and hear an update on fall enrollment and staffing. The Board will then accept nominations to serve on the Oregon School Board Association Board of Directors and consider our business agenda. Board members, are there any items in the business agenda that you have questions on?
I might. I had some questions out, but I've been in jury duty all day, so I haven't seen if I've gotten the answers yet, so I will check. Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So before we move on, I just want to mention that Director Bailey is on his way back from a work, his actual job, which took him to Seattle today, so he'll be getting in probably in an hour or so. Okay, Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have five students and six for general public comment.
Okay, do you want to call the first two students?
The first two students are Natalie Rocha and Karli Shulikov.
Okay, while they're making their way to the table, I want to review the guidelines for public comment. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the Board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen to those testifying without distractions from electronic devices or papers. Board members and the Superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but the Board Office will follow up on Board-related issues raised during public testimony. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employee should be directed to the Superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional items that you want to distribute to the Board, please give them to Ms. Hewson when you're finished. And presenters will have three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments then and allow other speakers to begin. So, we appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. So, who wants to start?
Hello, my name is Natalie Rocha, you spell that R-O-C-H-A. I am a proud 2017 graduate of Mount Scott Learning Center, and I want to thank the Board and the Superintendent for supporting successful contracted education option schools like Mount Scott Learning Center. My first year of high school went well. I felt great because I was going to school with some of my closest friends, but things back home weren't not so good. My parents were constantly fighting and it felt like they were putting my siblings and I in the middle of it. I had all this anger built up in me because I wasn't getting enough attention at home from either of my parents. By the time I started my sophomore year, I became rebellious. I started skipping all my classes and hanging around the wrong group of kids. I was acting out to get attention. I remember I used to tell myself I wasn't beautiful and that I wasn't worth it. I stopped believing in myself, which led to depression. I skipped so much, I was dropped for some of my classes. My mom noticed my changes and knew she needed to take action. I went to therapy for about four months and I was switched to Mount Scott Learning Center. When I first started, I didn't know anyone and I felt out of place. At first, I didn't want to be there because I had no friends there and I didn't know the staff. I remember I kept telling my mom to get me out of that school, to take me back to where I was before. She told me that at least I had to give the school a chance and if I didn't like it by the end of my junior year, she would let me go back. With that in mind, I decided to open up my mind to a new school. I knew I had to adapt and give it a chance, so I did. Mount Scott Learning Center helped me every step of the way. I met new friends and I gave the teachers a chance. After about a month, I felt like I was right at home. This school helped me open my wings. They believed me even at times when I didn't believe in myself. They helped my voice grow stronger and louder. Before Mount Scott, I didn't see myself with the future and now I do. Yesterday, I started my second year at Portland Community College and I'm planning on transferring next year to Concordia University for the nursing program. If it weren't for Mount Scott Learning Center, I honestly don't think I would be where I am today. Mount Scott changed me into a better person. I am who I am because of this school. I learned how to speak for myself. I want to thank the Board and the Superintendent for having schools like Mount Scott that help students like myself achieve their goals and their dreams.
Hi there, my name is Karli Jo Shulikov, last name spelled S-H-U-L-I-K-O-V, and I'm a graduate of Mount Scott Learning Center. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my story in support of Mount Scott and the other contracted community-based schools serving Portland Public Schools. Growing up an only child, both of my parents were addicts. They were addicted to heroin, they were gambling addicts, and they were both alcoholics. A year and a half ago, I lost my mom to her disease. I was 24 and I spent Christmas only able to communicate with her through hand-holding. She passed away shortly after the New Year and my daughter lost her Grandma Julie that day. Due to my circumstances at home growing up, there was little support around my education. And it was, it was in the beginning of my eighth grade year that I found myself really struggling to learn in a large public school environment. I wasn't getting the individual support I needed at my previous school and I wasn't getting that at home. And I found myself needing a place like Mount Scott Learning Center. I needed a place that provided me a smaller, quieter learning environment. It was very difficult being forced to grow fast and being the adult in my home, but I didn't have the luxury of an invested mentor or parent in my life thus forcing me to find my own way. Getting that one-on-one time with my teachers at Mount Scott was something new to me and helped me grow leaps and bounds. The curriculum was really engaging and I felt connected to the adults in my life for the very first time. Having those connections with my teachers was very special to me and it was something that I had never before had in my life. Through the encouragement of my teachers and being in the Mount Scott community, I began to see myself as a very capable person, a capable student, and a capable human being. I found my voice and was given the confidence to realize my self-worth and all that I had to offer. The school helped me succeed not only academically but also personally and professionally. I started working for US Bank when I was 18 years old and since then I've received a couple promotions. I've been with the company for seven and a half years now. I work currently in the commercial lending department at the Big Pink Tower downtown and after previously transitioning from the assistant branch manager role of a branch in downtown Portland. I love my job, I love being the face of the company, I love dealing with customers day in and day out. I'm no longer ashamed of where I come from because where I come from is Mount Scott Learning Center. I was taught the perfect example of the person that I wanted to be and I'm now a reflection of the staff at Mount Scott and I couldn't be prouder. What Mount Scott does, it changes lives and it's definitely changed mine, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Zaza Walsh and Harper Williams.
Hi, I'm Harper Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S.
And I'm Esperanza Walsh, W-A-L-S-H. Good evening, we are 245157. I'm sorry, we don't have any cookies right now. It's not a time for cookies. First off, we thank you for working hard to open Harriet Tubman Middle School. Our fellow student, girl scout teammate, and most of all friend, Julia Harnish, is not getting the support she needs in school. Julia is a student that needs a par educator with her. She hasn't had one so far this year. Julia has a right to attend school with her peers and not be separated or have to stay home because there's no one to support her needs. She's been sent home five times. When at school, she doesn't want to go to class because she is scared and feels alone. We find these situations sad and disappointing.
As her friend, we are trying our best to help her get to her classes, get ready for class, and help her feel safe and comfortable during school. During lunch, we try our best to give her the socialization she needs and she hasn't had all day. Most importantly, we try to be good friends. There are several special needs students in a school of 500 kids. There are many more in other PPS schools. If this is happening to Julia, it must be happening to other kids too. We have been doing our best to help support Julia. What is your plan to help support all students who need this? We want to end by saying again how much we appreciate your efforts to open Tubman and all the administration and staff working to make it a school where everyone can thrive and learn, and that includes students like our friend Julia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last student speaker is Lucas Carson.
Hello, I'm Lucas Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N. We are both from Alliance at Benson. The campus plans on getting rid of Alliance when they remodel. They plan on remodeling in 2021 or something.
help students like myself achieve their goals and their dreams.
My name is Carly Jo Shulikov, last name spelled S-H-U-L-I-K-O-V. And I'm a graduate of Mount Scott Learning Center. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my story in support of Mount Scott and the other contracted community-based schools serving Portland Public Schools. Growing up an only child, both of my parents were addicts. They were addicted to heroin. They were gambling addicts, and they were both alcoholics. A year and a half ago, I lost my mom to her disease. I was 24, and I spent Christmas only able to communicate with her through hand-holding. She passed away shortly after the New Year, and my daughter lost her Grandma Julie that day. Due to my circumstances at home growing up, there was little support around my education. And it was, it was in the beginning of my eighth grade year that I found myself really struggling to learn in a large public school environment. I wasn't getting the individual support I needed at my previous school, and I wasn't getting that at home. And I found myself needing a place like Mount Scott Learning Center. I needed a place that provided me a smaller, quieter learning environment. It was very difficult being forced to grow up fast and being the adult in my home, but I didn't have the luxury of an invested mentor or parent in my life, thus forcing me to find my own way. Getting that one-on-one time with my teachers at Mount Scott was something new to me and helped me grow leaps and bounds. The curriculum was really engaging, and I felt connected to the adults in my life for the very first time. Having those connections with my teachers was very special to me, and it was something that I had never before had in my life. Through the encouragement of my teachers and being in the Mount Scott community, I began to see myself as a very capable person, a capable student, and a capable human being. I found my voice and was given the confidence to realize my self-worth and all that I had to offer. The school helped me succeed not only academically, but also personally and professionally. I started working for US Bank when I was 18 years old, and since then, I've received a couple promotions. I've been with the company for seven and a half years now. I work currently in the Commercial Lending Department at the Big Pink Tower downtown, and after previously transitioning from the Assistant Branch Manager role of a branch in downtown Portland. I love my job. I love being the face of the company. I love dealing with customers day in and day out. I'm no longer ashamed of where I come from, because where I come from is Mount Scott Learning Center. I was taught the perfect example of the person that I wanted to be, and I'm now a reflection of the staff at Mount Scott, and I couldn't be prouder. What Mount Scott does, it changes lives, and it's definitely changed mine. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zaza Walsh and Harper Williams.
And I'm Esperanza Walsh, W-A-L-S-H. Good evening. We are 245157. I'm sorry, we don't have any cookies right now. It's not a time for cookies. First off, we thank you for working hard to open Harriet Tubman Middle School. Our fellow student, girl scout teammate, and most of all, friend, Julia Harnish is not getting the support she needs in school. Julia is a student that needs a par educator with her. She hasn't had one so far this year. Julia was, has a right to attend school with her peers and not be separated or have to stay home because there's no one to support her needs. She's been sent home five times. When at school, she doesn't want to go to class because she is scared and feels alone. We find these situations sad and disappointing.
As her friend, we are trying our best to help her get to her classes, get ready for class, and help her feel safe and comfortable during school. During lunch, we try our best to give her the socialization she needs and she hasn't had all day. Most importantly, we try to be good friends. There are several special needs students in a school of 500 kids. There are many more in other PPS schools. If this is happening to Julia, it must be happening to other kids, too. We have been doing our best to help support Julia. What is your plan to help support all students who need this? We want to end by saying again how much we appreciate your efforts to open Tubman and all the, and all the administration and staff working to make it a school where everyone can thrive and learn, and that includes students like our friend Julia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last student speaker is Lucas Carson.
I'm Lucas Carson, C-A-R-S-O-N. We are both from Alliance at Benson, and our camp, the campus plans on getting rid of Alliance when they remodel. They plan on remodeling in 2021 or something. We don't support that, like, we don't think it's a very good idea to, like, get rid of Alliance. It's a very, it's very, it's a very useful program for, especially for kids who can't be in, like, normal, big public schools. Like, I personally cannot, like, they're very anxiety-inducing and whatnot. We only get a small, we only get a hallway and three rooms in that hallway out of the entire school, so we aren't taking much space out, but they still want to get rid of us. There is an entire radio building that they're not using. And if they want to remodel and get rid of us, they can maybe at least give us the building because they aren't using it for anything, so it, like, it just wouldn't, I don't know. What else to say? Oh, yeah, we do not get treated equally at all. Like, we get, like, the bottom of the barrel with this stuff, too. Like, a lot of the, for example, we had a friend who was talking to just, like, a regular Benson student, and she mentioned that she was part of this program, and they were like, "Oh, so you're one of the messed-up kids." And, like, that's, like, really, like, a, like, just a generalization of, just because we're, like, in a different program, I guess, is just, like, you know? Sorry, I'm not wording this out weird, but, like...
We have, we have, hi, I'm Gwenevere Scott, S-C-O-T-T. We have, again, we have a very small portion of the school, and as Lucas said, we don't get treated equally as the rest of the school does. I personally have a lot of anxiety issues, and public school sounds like a nightmare. There's a big group of kids that if we did have to move schools, there would be a lot of kids that would not be able to go to school. And then there's a whole group of teenagers that just aren't going to school anymore, and...
I don't want to move, I don't want to keep moving. Like, I've already switched schools, like, multiple times, just because of, like, I, due to, like, just not being able to stay in public school, I keep switching schools and whatnot. This is the only program that I've, like, actually liked and wanted to go to, and it's, like, the only, like, like, I want to get my education here and whatnot. So, the fact that they're, like, trying to get rid of that is just, like, I don't know. You know? Do you have anything else to say?
I think that's, that's the main point that we were trying to make, is just, this is a good program for a lot of people, and if it weren't there, there's a whole big group of people that wouldn't, we'd have to go. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hayes Witt and Nicole Hillis. Kachina Inman and Joanna Vossberg.
My name is Joanna Vossberg, and it's spelled V-A-U-S-B-E-R-G. And I'm the art teacher at Alliance High School. So, we did hear that about three years ago, we had been invited to be part of the concept of how they would do the rebuild and where we would be as a school. And we had just learned that in the new plans or the new design, we were not included. So, one of the things I wanted to say about Alliance High School is that we serve, we serve this district both on both ends. We have our reconnection services, which go out and bring in kids who have dropped through the cracks, who have, whatever reason, have disengaged. And we bring them in and we get them ready to go into comprehensive high schools or to other programs. So, we not only address their credit recovery needs, but we also address their emotional needs and all other types of social needs, so that when they get ready to move into another program, they're already prepared. Instead of just moving from one place to the next and having the same thing happen, we prepare them so that they don't stumble in the same way. They understand what their needs are. They know how to have self-advocacy and all of those things. On the backside of it, as Alliance High School, because we are an accredited high school, we also have what's called credit recovery. So, students who didn't quite get all the credits they needed by the time they graduated, they can come to us. They have up till 21 to get their high school education. We also do dual enrollment with PCC, or I think they call it dual enrollment, but we have that program that they can move into. And these students graduate just like every other high school in the district. So, one of the things that I want to say about our students is, well, this came up when I talked to a lot of students, that they often have to overcome multiple obstacles to education. They might have anxiety issues. They might have been bullied. Maybe they have educational needs. Maybe they have an unstable home. We have a lot of homeless students. And so, a lot of these students not only have the instability of going through multiple schools and not finding success until they come to us, but they also may have the same thing in their home life. And in that, and when we can provide for them, and we can provide them with a place that is stable and say that we're a school, just like every other school in the district, that we actually have a physical place that we can be. And for a lot of our students, the access that we have because of the hub, you know, the metro, the students can come from the west side, the east side, the north, they can all get there. There's multiple ways to get there. It's a centrally located area. And, and for me, the access, having a permanent home sends a message to our students that they, too, have, have a stable and accessible place to support their educational goals. These are just a couple of reasons why I believe we should be located at the site, that it has easy access from anywhere in the district. I think it's also why we need a permanent structure for Alliance High School. And I think there are ways to consider, because I know we had this big discussion with Board members three years ago and other, I think there were people who were talking about how they were going to plan it. So, there was lots of options that came up from a freestanding building, because you can go up in that, where we're at. We don't have to worry about height issues, as well as having, you know, we don't have a cafeteria, we don't have a gym. I share my small classroom with a math teacher. So, you know, we all have to share space. It's crowded. You know, Benson needs their space as well, so trying to come up with a way that's going to sort of work for all of us, I think is an important, important place. And for the, for the, for students who are struggling and found this place and they get to get here, they can get to that particular location, and for them to maybe find out that next year, we're way out in the, you know, north side and they no longer can get there, that's going to put just another obstacle in their path. And I feel like when we want to make sure that we're addressing student needs, that we don't want to add more obstacles into somebody's path so that they can make it to, to school and get their education.
Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Alina Vance and James Posey.
Hello. My name is Alina Vance, spelled V-A-N-C-E. I'm here at this board meeting on behalf of Alliance High School. The staff asked me to come speak on their behalf. I just wanted to say, I myself, I am a Banport descendant. I am a second-generation Jefferson High School graduate. I'm a civil servant. I've worked all over Oregon for the Bonneville Power Association, the Forest Service, Bureau of Land Management. My mother is the first black woman journeyman pipefitter in the state of Oregon, and my father is a master mechanic. All that being said, my child is a grad 2017 graduate of Alliance High School. Her name is Noble, and she is a prodigy artist. She has anxiety issues, and she is a bit quirky, maybe like the students you've seen here, that spoke here before. However, that does not mean that she doesn't deserve to have a high school diploma. She went to Grant High School, where she wanted to go, which is a lot different than Jefferson High School, where we, she wanted to go there. And being that there are 4,000 students in Grant High School, Noble, with her, with her personality, began to fall through the cracks. And even though they have a great art program, she basically wasn't able to succeed and be successful there at Grant High School, and was having socialization issues and just anxiety issues, being that there are so many students there. And there are just more people coming to, moving to Portland, and the school board has to keep in mind, what are we going to do and how are we going to educate all these children that are relocating to Portland with the people who are moving here? So, once again, all that being said, Alliance High School was, was very beneficial to Noble. She chose to go to that high school. She didn't want to go back to Grant after she was just a few credits short, maybe three. She went to Alliance High School. It was right here in the neighborhood, so it was easy for me to keep track of her, her progress in school. She has a great home life and everything, but she just needed a little different type of an educational setting for herself. I was able to reassure her that you would not have to, this would not be a GED. You will be receiving a high school diploma, just like all the rest of the students who are graduating from Portland Public School. And she went to Alliance High School, and with a little prodding and probing, and with a lot of help from the staff, who was very helpful, she was able to graduate and obtain her high school diploma, which made me very proud. And now she can continue with her life. It's not just a momentary thing, obtaining and achieving a high school diploma. It's a life, it's something that's beneficial for a lifetime. So, all that being said, thank you for my time.
Thank you.
My name is James Posey, P-O-S-E-Y, and I'm here to bring you all two issues. Only have three minutes, and so that's a difficult task. So, I'm not going to read the statements I intended to read, but I want to show you the document that I'm bringing for NAMCO, National Association of Minority Contractors of Oregon. And I've been before you, before, to talk about the absence, the exclusion of minority contractors on your school projects and your bond measures. And I just want to let you know, you are making progress. You've got COLIS, I think, at Grant, and you've got a process in which you're really including some of the people that have been historically left out. And I'm here tonight to really affirm your alternative bidding process. That's a, that's a huge, huge advancement in the whole concept of involving minority contractors, not having the ability to go low bid. Low bid is not always the best bid. So, you all are seeing the light, and I want to thank you for that and applaud you for that. I won't read Nate's statement. He's got a nice, real eloquent statement. I hope you all will take time to read it. But the second item is an item of concern. I've got a letter here from Eric Knox, who is the girls' basketball coach at Benson. You guys are pulling back on their ability to utilize these gyms around the urban areas. You're taking away their ability to actually work with other source basketball agencies to actually allow these kids who have income, allow them to make trips outside of the area to actually participate in other league activities. And what I'm saying is, you all maybe are trying to do that in order for budget considerations, but you're cutting off your nose despite your face when you do that. You all know that, that in these urban areas, in these inner-city areas, we can't give enough programs that get, keep these kids off the streets. And as we align these things and we look at budget and do all those other things, we need to know what we're doing. These guys are volunteering their time. They're actually mentors on the weekends. All these kids are out of these schools, and they, this is a real option for them to stay off the streets. And I'm suggesting, this letter from Eric, he's your, he's your person, your employee. Take a look at what he has to say. And he's referred this letter to Marshall Hackens, and I think he's your director of that PIL program. And I would just encourage you all to reevaluate that, and I want to further get feedback from your, I'm Spuzzman, about how you all made that decision. I want to look at the dollars and do a cost-benefit analysis on why you're doing what you're doing on that PIL situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can give the documents to Ms. Hewson, and she'll make sure we get them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Superintendent Guerrero, do you want to give your report?
Yes, good evening, directors. Well, it's hard to believe we're heading into the second month of the school year already. For those of you that have been following me on Twitter, you'll, you'll have noticed that I'm getting around. I've prioritized spending a lot of time visiting schools, which I'm going to talk about in just a little bit, but I have to say, I think generally, we're off to a very positive and smooth start to the school year, and we're ironing out a few details. And I'm not the only one spending time in our schools. For instance, this week, we began our first Shadow a Student in September initiative. The idea is pretty simple. Many folks who work in central administration, who don't typically get out to schools on a regular basis, are, are getting that opportunity. They get to follow a student for, for, you know, a good portion of a day. It gives our staff the opportunity to see what that day in the life is like, the activities, the joys, the challenges up close from the eyes and perspective of our students. So, this is an invaluable experience that's hopefully going to help inform our work as we look at ways to better serve our students and support our schools. And spending time with a student also helps clarify how the work we do can have a direct impact on the classroom experience. And speaking of having a direct impact, over the weekend, I know that more than 30 volunteers participated in Reconnect to Your Future campaign. There was an energetic team, which I know included many of the directors and our deputy superintendent, Dr. Curtis, our chief of schools, Dr. Quayar, who knocked on more than 100 doors of families with students who, for some reason or another, have disengaged from our schools. But the extra effort of conducting these home visits are just part of the reconnection work, and all the program serves over 1,000 students. And last year, we were able to persuade 478 of them to re-enroll. So, we know that these efforts, now in their eighth year, is having a direct impact, impact on supporting our schools, our students graduating. So, many thanks to those who participated this weekend and in past and previous years for that effort. So, knowing how many students we're actually serving and making sure we have the right level of staff to serve them is critical. A little later from staff tonight, you're going to hear a detailed enrollment and staffing update, but I want to give you a few high-level impressions on, on how we're doing. We are expecting just under 50,000 students as a count. So, we've had some significant growth in our high schools in particular. 643 more students, to be exact, compared to last year at this time, and it's actually 376 students above what we were projecting. So, that's a good sign. We are spending millions of additional dollars towards meeting class-size goals and a more ideal student-teacher ratios across the district, so also a big positive move forward. And I've started to get a chance to see some of the impact of these added teachers in schools as I've been visiting around the district and had a chance to, to witness some, some of our newest educators in the school district. And just a few highlights, in no particular order or favoritism, there's just a lot of good things you can track. At Glanco, I had a chance to sit down with students and observe teachers in their writing and reading workshops, see students partnering on science experiments, really tackle some mathematical equations and concepts. Thank you, Principal Clark, for hosting me there. At Hosford Middle School, I'll have to go back because I missed the band rehearsal, but I did have a chance to meet with a fabulous group of eighth-grade avid students, as well as Mandarin immersion students, who shared with me their experience at Hosford. Thank you, Principal Westfall. And at Marysville, which, which is known for its focus on mindfulness, had a chance to enjoy the, the calm school climate that Principal Penley has helped to cultivate there with, with the community. And one of my favorites, got to observe groups of students building rockets at Winter Haven, working on a hands-on science project, and, and our youngest students thinking about the characteristics of planets. Thank you, Principal Sandaland. So, we have lots of inter- So, we have lots of interesting, important work going on in our schools and continue to encourage everyone to take a look. There's some events coming up. I want to make sure are on folks' calendars. This Thursday, September 27th, the Oregon Legislature's Joint Committee on Student Success will be at Madison High School. PPS is hosting this public hearing on how to improve graduation rates in our schools. We want to encourage the PPS community to show up, participate, be in the audience, hear the conversation. The event is scheduled from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and childcare and interpretation services will be provided. I want to give a shout-out and thank our very own Courtney Westling for helping to support this event. Thank you very much. On October 2nd, Roosevelt High School will be the venue for the first Oregon gubernatorial debate, sponsored by Pamplin Media and Coin TV. That might be of interest to folks. And what will be unique about this one is that it's going to feature questions exclusively from students, including one of PPS's own. On October 17th, help us celebrate the grand opening of Roseway Heights Middle School. And the next night, on October 18th, we're going to be doing the same for Harriet Tubman Middle School. Looking forward to those grand openings, of these two middle schools. It represents a huge milestone for the Portland Public Schools. These schools represent a new opportunity for hundreds of middle-grade students in historically underserved communities to experience the kind of comprehensive middle-school education that our board was committed to. So, thank you, Principals Elwood and Butler, for your tireless work in getting these schools open. We have some wonderful educators, multi-talented here in PPS. One of our teachers is getting some attention around town and nationally for his work as a writer and illustrator. Aaron Steinke, who teaches fourth and fifth grade at Woodstock, has had one of those recognitions and gave a reading recently at Powell's Bookstore. You'll notice that we posted a short clip on our website featuring a story that ran on KPTV. We hope folks will check it out. And lastly, I want to start by kind of shouting out our student delegate, Nick Paisler. So, annually, there's a collaborative of the seven largest school districts in America called the Council of Great City Schools, of which I serve on the executive committee. But at their annual fall conference, it's a tradition to host a town hall. And this, this October, the 24th through the 27th, that town hall is going to be a national student panel in Baltimore, and it's going to include a student moderator as well. And our very own student delegate, Nick Paisler, is going to be representing Portland Public Schools in the Pacific Northwest as one of a handful of students from around the country who are going to speak on the themes that are important to them as secondary-age kids, not least of which are going to be themes around the importance of voting, civic engagement, immigration, and other contemporary issues that I know are on the minds of our young students. So, just in advance, thank you, Nick, for representing. And we're sure to hear about it after the conference.
Super excited.
So, you know, we put in that application and the proposal that we had someone who we thought would do a fabulous job, and they agreed. So, congratulations. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So, we're going to move on to alternative contracting methods at Kellogg and Benson. For this item, the board will be acting in their capacity as the contract review board. I'd like to invite Emily Courtenage, Director of Purchasing and Contract, to provide the report.
Good evening, Chair Moore and Board. We are here tonight seeking an exemption from the standard low-bid, design-bid-build contracting method that is required for most public construction projects. We are seeking also permission to proceed with a two-step process for the Kellogg Middle School rebuild. That two-step process is a request-for-proposals process to pre-qualify a number of contractors, followed by a low-bid process that is only open to those pre-qualified contractors. We are also seeking permission to proceed with a construction manager general contractor or CMGC contracting method for Benson High School. The CMGC and other alternative contracting methods are explicitly permitted in Oregon law and in our public contracting rules, as long as the board grants an exemption from the low-bid process. And that exemption must be based on written findings, which you all have before you in your board packets. The board previously permitted use of the CMGC method for Franklin, Roosevelt, Grant, Lincoln, and Madison. And the board previously approved use of the two-step alternative contracting method for Fabian. The benefits for both alternative methods is that we procure our contractors by request for proposals instead of a purely low-bid process. That allows evaluation of proposers' experience, the project team's specific expertise for the project, and commitment to utilizing certified minority-owned, women-owned, emerging small business, and service-disabled veteran businesses. In addition, as I said, with the two-step process with Kellogg, we can ensure that the low bidder has already been determined via the pre-qualification process to be highly-experienced, skilled, and financially sound. With the CMGC process for Benson, we can select a contractor early in the design process. The CMGC's construction expertise can impact the design and reduce later construction challenges and change orders. This also allows construction to begin well before design is complete. With me is Dan Young from Office of School Modernization, and he can answer any questions about the projects.
So, I get why we're doing Kellogg now, but just looking at the order of where we are in the Benson process, so the DAG is just being, the Design Advisory Group is just now being formed. Can you talk a little bit about the, why we'd be voting on the Benson process at this point in time? So, Kellogg's already on its way, and so it seems like that's either trailing or Benson's way ahead. And so, the rationale for doing Benson so early and then how it fits in the other checkpoints that, we'll come back to the board. I'm not sure we even know what kind of school we're designing yet for Benson.
Sure. Good question. Part of the reason is they're two different processes. So, the two-step process for Fabian brings the general contractor on basically the same time that you would.
Kellogg.
Sorry, Kellogg. Apologies. The same time you would if you did a hard bid. So, they aren't really on during design. They come on during, right before the construction phase. The CMGC process for Benson, you bring the contractor on during the design process. So, there are a couple reasons we want to bring someone on soon for Benson. One is the complexity around the phasing for that project. It's going to be multi-phased, it's going to be very complex how we do that, and how we phase construction will impact how we design it. So, the sooner we get them on, the sooner that we'll have input into that portion of the work. We also want, always try to bring our CMGC on during schematic design. So, at the end of the schematic design phase, we can compare the general contractor's cost estimate with our professional cost estimate, so we can reconcile those cost estimates as soon as we can.
So, just the follow-on. So, assuming we approve the Benson piece tonight, the next thing that we come back to the board is?
It's both.
Explain the major milestones.
Sure. Is both the, so there's an ed-spec that's being developed along with the master plan for Benson, so those are going to come hand-in-hand. Right now, we're targeting in November to come to a work session, and then in December to come with the ed-spec and the master plan.
I think as part of the rationale for the work session that we have tonight focusing on CTE is helping to guide us towards some priorities around Benson.
Correct.
Some unanswered questions.
So, this is a larger comment, not necessarily on this particular step tonight, but if I look at the Benson project, if we're going to vote in November, December, we have, I think, a lot of other secondary issues aside from CTE, which is a more general discussion tonight. What is the type of CTE specifically at Benson? What we're going to do about Alliance? And then the need for some sort of enrollment planning, which was part of the bond that we needed to do that in order that we, if we're going to reopen Benson at 1,700 students as a comprehensive high school, the impact that has on other schools and that we don't yet have a plan to open it without decimating some other schools. So, I'm concerned about just the timing of how we do that all between now and November without it mapped out.
I don't think, as you said it, it's exactly correct. We didn't make a commitment to open up Benson at 1,700. We are committed to opening up Benson with the eventual capacity for 1,700. And we, but we do not have a path to get there at all. So, a very important topic, but we do have a little more time.
I think there's some big philosophical questions. So, to get eventually to 1,700 and the impact it has on the other high schools is something that I think is going to be hard to cram into a small amount of time. I'd like to see a larger plan. Again, this isn't related to tonight's vote, but I'm concerned that we don't have it all mapped out. We're going to start getting behind or not have the opportunity to have a thoughtful community discussion.
And I would agree with that. Concerns about enrollment balancing, but also just what is our process for Benson High School and the policy questions, policy and programmatic questions associated with what is this rebuild going to represent for our students? What is it going to offer? And I know tonight's session is specifically intended to have a focus on getting to some of these questions around Benson, so that's a good start. But I, for one, would like to see it mapped out. These are the range of unanswered questions that we need to address before we start getting into schematic design and start really nailing down the ed specs, because the ed specs need to be a representation of whatever our academic vision is for our kids, and we're not there yet. So, just process would be nice to see. Again, not pertinent to your issue at hand, Emily.
So, I'm curious, Superintendent Guerrero, how you see, who's sort of spearheading the, sort of marrying the facility, the major facility work with the pretty big enrollment and academic questions that we need to resolve around Benson? Is there a small team or who's? Because it's not specifically a facilities question, it's a much larger sort of cross-functional question.
Right. So, these are really big questions. There isn't sort of a long-term strategic plan around the high school portfolio. What I, what we have heard as some guiding principles is making sure all the secondaries offer some equitable opportunities. Tonight, we're going to go deeper on what does it look like in the future of CTE and PPS? What are those national standards? How are we spreading those out, that access to our students? Benson would be one location, from what I understand, has continued to be a citywide option. It is true that if we expand over time the enrollment, you heard me tonight say, you know, we're lucky that we're up enrollment in high school. Not sure where they're coming from. That'll require a little more investigation, but that's a positive trend upwards. And it's giving schools like Roosevelt High School, which saw its largest freshman class yet, that's a good sign. And I think it makes, it gives those schools an economy of scale on their programming. But I think this is, this is going to require, one, some direction from the board around what the parameters are, what essential questions need to be answered, because some of this is just work that, you know, staff will continue to sort of give shape to. But which questions are going to be really important to answer as we think about the design for Benson and valued programs that are currently co-located there? And, you know, what is important and what is the direction of the board on those? You know, we've seen what happens when programs get dislocated. And so, we want to make sure that we're assuring the community and families and students who benefit from those options as an example and what their future holds for them as well. So, it would be good to spend some time sort of mapping out what the short and the long-term questions are that need to be answered. Some of them are programmatic. Some of them, you're going to start to hear some thinking around that, as staff has come together around them. But it's a bigger question around what is the school portfolio generally going to be offering our students citywide? And so, Benson occupies a unique place in that portfolio, and so, we want to offer something unique there that perhaps another facility might not offer, which might actually be the attractor for increasing enrollment in PPS from a lot of other places where people might want to access some leading-edge industry connections. And that's what's exciting about the potential of this project. So, sorry if I can't give you a firm timeline, but it's going to require some work, kind of whiteboarding this out with the board, so we can, we can have some more definitive shape to this.
And I can, I know that staff are working on sort of whiteboarding out the timetable. Things are, things are in motion on both the facility side and the academic side. I think they're approaching a timetable about how we're going to tackle the different elements of this. And I'm hoping to be able to distribute some initial thoughts to the board in the next week or so. But it's the teaching and learning staff just did a retreat last week and I think worked out a lot of the details on their end. It's now trying to marry up the facility stuff and the academic stuff to try to come up and the board piece of it. So, stay tuned. Things will be coming very soon.
What is the timeline for the completion of the Benson ed specs?
Same as the master plan. So, targeting right now, work session in November, and then approval in December.
So, I guess I'm just going to reiterate my request, that we get on like one page what the major milestones are and what the big questions, because, I mean, just tonight, having a vote on one piece of it, sort of as sort of random, I mean, it seems somewhat random because it's not connected into a bigger plan. And so, that we don't all of a sudden in November have a big vote, and we haven't had an opportunity to have a really thorough discussion about what will be our largest capital project from the bond. So, I'd like to see that as soon as possible.
And, I mean, I understand that we need to pass this in order for schematic design to get underway at all, but schematic design can't really get underway until we've nailed down ed specs in the first, anyway, right?
Yes, that's correct. So, we'll need approval before we proceed on into the schematic design phase. And specific to tonight, this is just approval to do an alternate procurement at a future point in time.
So, it's just housekeeping? It's not actually kicking off any?
Correct. There's no immediate action. I mean, we will put a schedule together when we want this procurement to go out, but it's, it doesn't have a direct impact on the design or the ed specs or the master plan.
The RFP hasn't been developed yet, so this would give us permission to start thinking about that.
Any other questions? We have separate resolutions for Kellogg and Benson, so we'll begin with Kellogg. The board will now consider Resolution 5728, Kellogg Middle School Project exemption from competitive bidding and author, an authorization for use of a two-step request for qualifications, followed by invitation to bid alternative contracting method. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second. Director Anthony moves. Director Constance seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5728. Ms. Hewson, is there any citizen comment?
No.
Okay. Any further board discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5728. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 5728 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, we'll consider Resolution 5729, Benson Polytechnic High School Modernization Project, exemption from competitive bidding and authorization for use of a construction manager general contractor alternative contracting method. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second. Director Anthony moves, and Director Constance seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5729. Ms. Hewson, is there any citizen comment?
No.
Any further board discussion? The board will now vote on Resolution 5729. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Resolution 5729 is approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative Paisler voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now going to move on to an update on fall enrollment and staffing. I'd like to invite Dr. Craig Quayar, Chief of Schools, to provide the update.
As far as a Brown, good evening, Board of Directors and Superintendent Guerrero. This evening, we're going to provide you an update around student enrollment and staffing. Also, this presentation, we're also trying to be transparent in our process for allocating, how we allocate additional FTE. Where have we seen actual enrollment spikes? We're also working toward improving class sizes across the system. And the team has been monitoring enrollment class sizes also over the past month. So we're hoping that this presentation will shed some light on our process in terms of how we are moving forward.
I think you didn't mean to say increasing class sizes, but?
Increasing class. Right. Correct. We are aimed at increasing the FTE to reduce the student to adult ratio. Thank you, Superintendent. That's just a critical point. This slide here goes over the four core objectives of this presentation. We want to make sure that we are sharing the district commitment to improving student adult ratios and work towards our negotiated class size goals. Understanding how we use projected enrollment versus actual enrollment in making our decisions to allocate staff. Updating on the process for allocating staffing through the fall balancing phase and ensuring that we are applying one of three remedies to address higher class sizes. This slide clearly articulates where we were at the last year of staffing cycle and where we're at in this staffing cycle. The good news that we want to make sure that we highlight is that we have allocated almost 48 general FTE more than where we were last year. And if we include ESL, Special Education, Title and Foundation, that number will go up to 59 more FTE than where PPS was at this point in time last year. Also, we have allocated 22.4 FTE just in the past several months to balance mostly our higher-than-expected enrollment and class sizes. So I also wanted to point out that that also shows our, basically how deliberate we have been as a team in making sure that we were addressing the class sizes earlier than actually waiting for our anticipated 10-day observation period, where we were actually throughout the course of the process in the summer, we were identifying earlier on to be able to make some decisions earlier to prevent transition from happening after school has started.
Does the number of ESL teachers, does that reflect a decline in?
The number of EL students?
I believe so. Correct.
Okay. And foundation means?
Foundation FTE, is FTE produced by school foundations? So that?
Oh, okay.
That's not controlled by the school district.
Right. Thank you.
This slide shows our three-phase staffing process. In the spring, we allocate based on projected enrollment. Projected enrollment is the best method for projecting or predicting how many students will be in our schools for the following school year. We adjust staffing in the spring and in June, and now we're providing an update on fall balancing, which is the process where we look at actual enrollment and allocate from a limited budget to address where we have high, high class sizes and higher-than-expected enrollment across the school system. On the previous slide, it showed that we had allocated 22.4 FTE since August 8. The team and I have been meeting one to two times per week and making decisions based on the information in our student information system synergy, while also coupling that with physically going out to schools and actually being able to observe class sizes on our own. So we're not making decisions purely off of just what our system is telling us, because we know sometimes the numbers can be delayed or skewed. So we are also following that up with actual physical touches in the classrooms ourselves to make sure that we are actually physically matching up the numbers as well as the physical seats, physical bodies and seats.
So this slide is giving some highlights of our preliminary enrollment that we have so far this school year. This is as of September 19. So we'll be taking a final count on October 1. So as Superintendent Guerrero mentioned in his report, actual enrollment is up 347 students. We use projections in the spring, as Mr. Quayar said, and those projections across, all across the system were almost exactly spot on, that we were projected to be up 300, about 347 students, and that's, that's what we see across the system in all grades. And we'll get a little bit into the data in just, in the next slide. Some of the highlights of, of our enrollment being up is that our high school enrollment is up. We don't know all the reasons for that, and that will take some time to, to figure out those reasons. K-5 enrollment is down from the projection somewhat, and excitingly, our two new middle schools are over their projections. So this next slide shows what the, the difference between the actual and the projected enrollment by grade level. So just taking a look at kindergarten, which is that first row, you see that there's 3,692 students enrolled in the 2017-18 school year in kindergarten across the district. And this year, we're seeing exactly one more actual student. And then if you look over on the right side where it has the projected enrollment, we had projected about 3,733 students to be in kindergarten. So that projection was about 40 students short. Just to give another example, in 12th grade, in 1718, we had 2,679 students. This year, we have 2,842 students, which in actual students in 12th grade, year to year is 163 more students or 6.1% more students. They were only projected, however, to be about 94 more students. That went above the projection by 3.4%. And as a district, our total, you can see that number, 347 of actual students more. And then that's, on the right side, the projection was four students under the projection. So that's why we said the projection was almost spot on across the district. But you'll see by grade level, the projection was slightly off one way or the other. And this represents our traditional school, so it, we don't yet have a really solid count for our pre-K programs, our CBOs, charters and other programs, which we know will get us closer to that 50,000 student mark.
Can I, can I ask about these numbers? So there is some pretty, pretty big changes in particular grades. And I'm wondering if, have you done a school-by-school analysis yet?
We have done some school-by-school analysis, and that's when we've allocated additional FTE, that was in some cases, in particular, the, the high schools that saw more, more enrollment, there was more FTE was allocated over the last couple of months because the enrollment went up.
Apart from the high school, have you noticed any patterns yet in terms of the unexpected numbers for enrollment? Is anything leaping out yet?
Other than, than what's up there, I couldn't speak to a pattern.
Okay.
On the, there is, on the levers, are those, do we know the, what the breakdown is of the ones who actually, say, let's just take the first grade one, because that's pretty remarkable. It's a big drop. So is that kindergartners who then didn't go on to first grade? Or are they, are they students that we thought would come in first grade that didn't?
So when we see that number of, of first graders of actual enrollment for 2018-19 of 3,668 students, th- those were kindergartners in 1718. So really, we only lost, my math is not great, about 25, 30 kids from year to year of that cohort of kids.
So the rest were ones that we were projecting were going to come who didn't show up?
So, so I think the, the one thing is when we look across horizontally, that's different sets of kids. So we're not seeing a loss of 188 kids. We're seeing a loss of enrollment in first grade year to year of 188 kids. Of that cohort. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So that's why we see some of the fluctuations in that chart.
So you do do it the other way as well, so that you can see how much of your cohort you're holding on to?
We do that more, or when, when Craig's talking about the team meeting to look at where do we need to add additional FTE, we're really looking at a school. So if a school's enrollment is down or up, particularly if it's up, we're going to need to add additional FTE. Or if a class size goes above a certain level, we're going to have to add more FTE.
But that's by school. It's not, are we keeping, you know, kids from?
I think that, that would be analysis for, for another time, I think.
This slide and the next slide are intended to clarify the differences between our staffing ranges and the teacher overage thresholds. The staffing ranges were used to staff teachers for classrooms in grades K through five based on projected enrollment in the spring. The vast majority of our class sizes are below the high end of the range. We also use these ranges in fall balancing to help guide allocating our limited budget for remedying higher class sizes.
So this slide is showing the teaching caseload thresholds that were agreed upon with the teachers' union. And these thresholds are a little bit lower than our staffing ranges. This is what we, this is not our staffing model. This is what we're hoping to aspire to as a district. And there are one of three, or there's three remedies when we do not meet these thresholds. So these are different than, than the staffing ranges. One would be to add an additional teacher, and that was done with the 22.4 FTE in, in certain cases. We could also add an educational assistant or a stipend for teachers.
And to add to this as well, one of the focuses and one of the tweaks that we made to the process this year was having a highly concentrated focus on K-3. Is what we were really trying to be deliberate about was minimizing the amount of transition and mobility amongst our, our babies and making those decisions earlier on. So our, our little ones are not starting off with a teacher that they get accustomed and comfortable with and then us having to move them. We know that transition periods for our babies in terms of adjustment phases, it look a lot different than some of our older children in terms of being able to adjust easier. So one of the concentrated focuses that the team has been deliberate about in some of the 22 FTEs that we have provided was making some of those K-3 changes earlier before the school year started.
So the 59 more FTE that went into schools has contributed to a better student-to-staff ratio for 2018 and 19. If we look overall at schools, last year, it was 15 students per staff. This year overall is 14.7 students per staff, and that's directly related to the additional FTE that was allocated. Two of the most drastic were in our K-5 schools. We went from 15.5 students per staff to 14.9. And then in our reconfigured schools. So those are the schools that converted from K-8s to K-5s. They went to a better staffing, student-to-staff ratio this year as well.
Sorry. We go back to the, so reconfigured schools, you're talking about the K-8s that were made out of the K-5s that are now, that used to, okay. The remaining K-5 from the K-8s that are, that were?
Correct. Here's another way to say that, is the schools that?
The feeder schools to the new middle schools.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have one of three options right now. What we're seeing per the negotiated contract is that we have three ways to, to address the, the thresholds. We can, and we still have until October 15 to continue to make adjustments here. We can move students, provide additional staff, and then the third one is to pay educators. So this is a preliminary estimate based on what we were seeing in the system as of last week, as, as what we call overload pay for teachers that are above the negotiated thresholds.
We should clarify, that's for one semester.
Correct.
So in essence, the, the overage pay would be double that if, if the trend stayed consistent.
Correct. And, and it's the third Monday in October that, for the first semester and then the third Monday in February.
So just to clarify, the 1.3 million, that's just for a semester?
Right. That is correct. Yes, ma'am. You'll recall, Director Brim Edwards, when we were in negotiations, that there was a ballpark figure we anticipated. We're pretty much spot on to what we predicted.
This slide goes back to providing more of a, more of an inside description around what does the term fall balancing mean? And it's really a term that's used in school districts mainly around the country that describes the process of monitoring student enrollment and class sizes, in which then determines the allocated additional staffing. Balancing is used because sometimes we move teachers at under-enrolled schools. And we do want to make sure that this is something that, that's, we think positive to be able to announce that we only did that once this year, and it was done before school started in essence of moving and transitioning a teacher after the school year started. So this team has done a really, really good job at really zeroing in on where our overages were and our higher spiked enrollments throughout our campuses in the school district to be able to make those adjustments and to make some of those transitions with our teachers before the school year started. So I think that really is definitely a positive as we are, as we continue to refine our process moving forward.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding fall balancing with the high schools and the significant growth we've seen, can you just tell us anything anecdotal about how we're doing staffing there? Because aside from finding new teachers so that our averages come out right, it's tricky at high school because you need teachers, you need enough teachers in each subject area. And I've already heard several reports that certain departments are, every teacher in the department has significantly more than their total student load should be, whereas there may be FTE allocated to other areas within the high school curriculum that, who have much lower student loads. So can you share anything around that?
It's a great question, because the staffing does look different, as if we're staffing for a K-5 or K-8 where one FTE can actually suffice for a grade level. Whereas when you're actually providing FTE at the high school level, it's a little more creative. The, the master schedules at the high school level are much more complex. It's really, it's also driven mainly around students. And so that actually requires working with the principals to see where are some of our critical overages? It could, it, it could be at a specific freshman class. That could be algebra. It could be having that additional FTE, have multiple preps, where there are some overages in some of the core content, but that could also be across grade levels as well. And really, we leave that to the discretion of the principal in tandem with us, because the principal knows their master schedule best in terms of where those critical overages exist. But to your point, it is, it's a lot more of a, it's more of a complex process than it is doing it at the elementary K-8 level.
It's a fair observation. It's one we were in discussion with PAT, our teachers' union, just this past week, because, you know, their teachers are raising the same observation. It seems some departments have a higher caseload than others, but just for everybody's information, we're allocating total FTE to a high school. We're not making decisions for the school community around how they around how they allocate those FTEs on their campus and how they schedule them. So, you know, some of it requires, you know, working with our high school team to think about that question, to make sure that there's an equitable balance within the, the school itself. And so, uh, we definitely want to kind of do the next layer of work in making sure that, uh, you know, we're not, we're not overburdening any particular set of teachers at the secondary level.
So to that end, I'd like to see, um, because the high school numbers, um, I don't know very many class, very many classes that are fifteen. Um, you know, this is, this is the averages, uh, that.
Of all the adults.
Right, um, so I'd like to see, uh, like, bysection, um, breakdown, just so we can see what the patterns are. Um, I mean, I've heard just from a lot of the different high schools, you know, some huge class sizes in, um, some of the college prep classes, um, or that those are the smallest ones, and then you've got, you know, freshmen and sophomore jammed into, you know, really large classes. So I'd like to see, just to understand what the trends are across the high schools, um, to see a section by section sort of breakdown of, uh, class sizes in the high schools.
Okay, um, what I can do for the board, uh, from the direction of the superintendent is, um, I can provide, um, a high school summary report that can, um, hit on some of those more critical points that you mentioned, Director Brim Edwards, and I'll work with the high school team, um, to produce that and get it to the board.
So this evening's sort of objective was to give the overall view of it, obviously, and I really have to, uh, commend the team that's been, you know, obsessing over these questions since last spring. So Daniel Kogan, Sean Helms, others, the assistant supps and directors, as well as, you know, un- under our chief of schools, has really been careful about monitoring all of this. We're well aware of the board and ourselves have received a lot of, uh, questions and inquiries from, from community members around, can you take a look at this question, or this one seems a little higher? So we really have been tracking those. So the next layer of information, you know, we're not, we're not going to go into the minutia about, is that class by class, teacher by teacher number, and I think that's what you're asking for, Director Brim Edwards. So as we're finalizing, you know, those numbers, you know, stay tuned for, for that next layer of information.
Great, and, um, and I guess I should have started my question by, um, applauding the level of, um, information that you've provided and the work that's been done. I, I just also want to, I want to be cognizant that our community are look at this and, you know, nobody knows a K-eighth that's got thirteen's. If they look at this number, they may be led to believe that, that we've got thirteen students in a class, which.
These are not intended to communicate average class size, these are just ratios given all adults, adult, uh, budgeted at a given school site. So obviously, that's a, it's a skewed number if you look at it that way, yes.
Right, so I just think we have need to be careful, because, um, coming out of bargaining, there was, um, I think people thought that the number's going to be lower, and so we didn't talk it as, as a goal, we talked about it as a threshold. But the idea was.
We've never said these are class size maximums, I think we were pretty leading edge to say, well, let's set out some goals for class size. We called those thresholds, we've made, you know, a great deal of progress, you see the number of FTEs. You know, if you total that with the, with the extra compensation for our teachers, that's a very large number. It's over seven million dollars going in direct staffing support to schools.
Um, it, it just, I, I think it's worth noting that, um, I remember hearing in previous years about teachers being added to schools in mid to late October. Um, so this is a big difference, and, and I think it's worth underscoring that.
Thank you.
Well, and this might be just a tad of a sidebar, but have we compared these changes with other districts that surround us? Like, are the, like, is like Beaverton Districts and David Douglas, are, are they seeing kind of these influxes as well?
Um, I could say currently, we're not looking at, at a comparison with other districts. We, we have done that, that in the past, and, and we can do that again.
Okay. But we can, Nick, if that's something that's definitely interest, uh, we can.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, I guess, I mean, we all kind of are, you know, the city's getting so big, so much bigger and busier by the day, so just seeing what other districts are seeing as well, yeah.
Um, it might be worth mentioning that we're going to have a work session in November, uh, on enrollment projections. And we're going to be hearing from the guy who does them, so, um, that might be a, a place to get some comparative info.
Okay. I think these are great questions, I mean, when, as you start to look at the numbers, you start to, start to wonder these questions. You know, earlier when we saw sort of the drop at the elementary, when you start to look at the school list, you notice, huh, what's going on here? There seem to be a number of west side schools where we're losing families, so what's going on in the city of Portland? Uh, these are the kinds of things we're going, we're going to start wondering about, and hopefully our work with PSU might be able to offer some, some answer to that.
Can you share, um, sort of where the group landed or the thinking, or the evolving thinking on the single strand schools? Um, I was at Martin Luther King this last week, and just the challenge of you don't, you can't spread kids across classrooms. So I'm curious about how you all are thinking about that. If the, if the solution isn't adding another teacher, if there's not enough, um, students, what's, what's the thinking on, or heading, um, on the singles, single strand schools?
There were four FTE allocated, um, in June to alleviate, uh, single strand schools. Um, from the superintendent's direction, um, we didn't want to take, uh, and go under classes of fourteen. So I think using staffing as a solution to solve single strands is going to be very costly. Um, and so those four were allocated. Um, I can say, um, we allocated a little bit, um, as part of fall balancing. So, um, at Beach Kindergarten and the single strand, the, the size went up a little bit, and we, we made the, the EA full time to, to address that. So those were some of the ways that we addressed the single strand. Um, and if, if they were above our staffing ranges, then we would have allocated more for fall balancing, but none of them rose to that level.
Right.
So long-term, if it's not to add staffing because it's expensive.
Well, if you have an under-enrolled school or grade level, sending another homeroom teacher isn't necessarily the solution unless you want eight kids in the class. Um, it's really a programmatic enrichment, uh, working with the school community to identify what are the attractors? How do we strengthen the program? How do we partner on identifying what some of those things are? Sometimes it's more art, sometimes it's more elective, sometimes it's other programming that hopefully our families will, will be interested in being a part of and enroll in. So, uh, we just want to be mindful of, you know, all those factors. So we tried to be customized in, in the approach at MLK or any other schools to try to lend some support, however.
I, I will say that the, the merger, um, or the consolidation of Wrigler into an all immersion school um, helped to alleviate the single strand issue both at Wrigler and Scott. Um, Wrigler got rid of all of their single strands, because now they're just immersion. Um, and I believe Scott maybe, I, maybe has one left on the neighborhood side, maybe two. Um, and, and last year, um, in seventeen eighteen, I think, every single one of their neighborhood classes in both schools had single strands. So I think that's more of a promising way to, to address the issue.
And, and I think there you have sort of, some of the wondering is, sometimes it's not how do you support single strands, but what are the system policies and practices that actually have these existing? And so when you see school community saying, we'd love to have economy of scale, can we have a two-campus solution? Programmatically, that might be one way, you know, to encourage growth, uh, on our campuses. But I think the question is, you know, what are the impacts of specific program strands like dual language when they operate, uh, and, and sometimes in not very integrated ways, that you're segregating programs on, in the same building? And that's a bit problematic from my point of view. So I think it's a bigger question, it's not just a staffing and class size issue, it's how do we support the offerings that we want to make available to families so they can be strong and thrive?
So is Martin Luther King, if, our only single strand that's left, if Wrigler and Scott is on its way to being resolved?
No, we also have, uh, Beach also has, um, several singles, single strands in their K-five with, uh, immersion. And I think we have some other ones. Well, I think with, with Lent, what we've done is that they were, they only have, uh, one strand of immersion. So I think it's a little bit different in the, in the schools that have one strand of immersion.
Bridger?
Um, Bridger's another example, correct. So I think there's, there's a few other schools out there.
Siton and James John. Siton and James John.
James John.
So, um, I think by, by board resolution, um, we were supposed to have some sort of recommendations on the Martin Luther King, um, single strand issue, coming out of the middle school resolution. Who's on point for coming up with those?
Well, we are Director Brim Edwards, so.
Well, I just.
Well, we're, now that we're wrapping up sort of the fall balancing, we're going to go back to some of these bigger questions like, you know, uh, and really, this is the work of our OSP team, is as we think about each school in the portfolio programmatically, uh, how do we, uh, support their improvement efforts and strengthening of program strands? And so it's definitely a question we want to have a solid response to. And some of it might not be an easy overnight solution, some of it might need to be something we grow out over time in the coming years. Um, but we'll want to come back with some thinking on that as we, we think about all the related, uh, school portfolio and programming. Uh, it's not unrelated to the conversation we were just having with Benson and the alternative schools, or language pathways, or, uh, all of it is inter, interdependent and interrelated.
So just on the last slide, um, and the dates are cut off up there unfortunately, um, but October one is the official student enrollment, uh, count date that we send to the state. Um, October fifteen is the official count date to address overage payments. Um, and then lastly, on November one, uh, enrollment and class size reports will be posted on the PPS website.
So did we pull back any staffing in the fall balancing from schools that had significantly lower, uh, enrollment?
I believe we pulled back one.
It was the one, it was the one, but we, we had a couple of schools, um, where they had really small enrollment, uh, at some of our title schools, and the decision was made not to, uh, pull teachers from, from those programs where they'd already begun.
And, and we consider that as an additional resource. Um, by keeping small class sizes, particular in our title schools, um, we're not physically giving the school something additional, but keeping the class sizes, um, ex, you know, in a, in a, in a small student teacher ratio, that's considered an additional support. Um, so we were completely hands-off with even considering potentially of, um, removing any personnel um, from any of our title schools, that wasn't even considered.
So that is a, that is a differentiated support, it is a supplemental funding. But, uh, because we've been obsessing about a logic model here, it's important to keep sustainability and, and integrity to it in mind. So, uh, I'm saying that because if you don't fall in that category, and you've been staff additionally, you're sort of unnoticed a year ahead of time that, you know, if the numbers don't change, then, uh, we've got to be equitable about spreading that staffing to another school that we want to do some, uh, where they need the support.
And I think that's worth noting that when, when we have schools this year that were under projection with their enrollment, and then next year, they may come back and say, well, why are, we're getting less FTE? And that's, how your enrollment, your actual enrollment is, is of, is of October one this year is going to impact your projection for next year.
Um, can I make a request? Um, so in mid-October, you're going to do a, um, the, the official count for, um, the overage payments? Um, I think it would be interesting to hear about, um, how much of the remedy was in, was financial and how much was one of the other two, um, options, you know, either, um, yeah?
We, if it, if the board is interested in that level of detail, we could share lists side by side and what remedy was applied in each situation. So whether it was a stipend, an EA, or an additional FTE, that's certainly something we've been cataloging since last spring.
Yeah.
And that would, that would probably have to wait till November, as, as some of those numbers will be cleaned up, uh, for the rest of October, if, when we, when we look at that.
Whenever it's ready.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, thanks for your work.
Thank you so much.
Was, were we going to get an update on the paraeducators? On the staffing, there was, I told me this, earlier today, we were going to have an update on whether, um, what the paraeducator staffing level is. Nope. Uh, EAs, so it was related to the comment we had this, this evening?
From the Girl Scouts?
I'll, I'll ask it, I'll make a future ask, if we could, um, get an update on, so I've been to four or five schools in the last couple of weeks, and generally, um, staff and students and families are super happy about the staffing that we just heard about. Um, the one area where there's been shortages are in, where just, we're lacking hires, is paraeducators. Pretty much every school I've been to, that's been the one place where they didn't, don't yet have a staff.
Right, and I would, I'm not surprised that that's still one area, certainly our chief of HR, uh, Chief Brenda Martnik, and we won't talk specifically about that situation, but can talk generally about it. But maybe, Daniel, do you want to just talk for a second about that?
Yeah, so, um, there was about sixty-five vacancies at the beginning of August for paraeducators. Uh, it's been an area of high turnover in the district unfortunately. Um, and I believe in checking with, uh, HR, if my numbers are correct, we're closer to about ten vacancies right now.
We have eight open positions district-wide right now, and six, uh, still open, but those have offers outstanding or in the process of, uh, background checks being run. So we have the candidate identified, and we're moving through that process. So that's fourteen, uh, but eight that are really open.
So we went from sixty-eight open to eight, that's pretty incredible.
Huge improvement.
Switch it on.
So we still obviously, you know, every opening is critical to a student out there and a family, and I just want to recognize that. We heard, uh, like to see the scouts come out, uh, but I know that Chief Martnik is working with our, our, uh, Director of SPED on, on that particular case.
Thanks.
Welcome.
I, I would just add very briefly that, uh, the speed and effectiveness with which, uh, HR in the district have been able to hire teachers, uh, late in the game, uh, has certainly been noted, it's been very much appreciated.
As we get more evolved, uh, obviously, we're going to want to go way upstream in encouraging, you know, uh, multiple pathways into PPS, so we're looking forward to a human capital strategy there, but certainly one that helps bring a diverse workforce to, to the district. Uh, so we're engaged very actively in a lot of conversations with all our local higher ed institutions. Want to thank Dr. Sparza Brown, we've been having a lot of conversations with PSU in particular. It's not just about creating a candidate pool for us, but also making sure they have the skillset and the knowledge base that's going to be important to serve the students here in Portland.
Okay, um, at this time, the board is going to consider nominations for the Oregon School Board Association, um, Board of Directors. Uh, Director Anthony has stated his interest in continuing to serve on the OSBA Board of Directors. Um, do we have any other nominations?
Would you like me to move Director Anthony's nomination?
Uh, yes, please.
So moved.
In a second. Okay, we have, we have a third. Um, so Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Sparza Brown seconds, and Director Bailey thirds. Um, a nomination of Director Anthony for the OSBA Board of Directors, position nineteen. Um, any discussion?
Can you, what does that, um, position, or what does that zone encompass, and it, besides PPS?
Uh, that's Multnomah County.
All Multnomah County?
All the districts in Multnomah.
Okay.
Five districts?
Well, six technically, uh, no, it's more, that's more, that's Portland. Um, okay, so all in favor, um, please say yes. Yes, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and I don't think the student gets a vote, does he?
I mean, yes.
Okay, he's a yes anyway, good, okay. Okay, uh, the nomination of Director Anthony will be forwarded to the Oregon School. be forwarded to the Oregon School Board Association for a subsequent vote. Okay, so we are now at the business agenda. And I just want to note that we're about thirty minutes behind schedule. The board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on resolutions five-seven-two-seven through five-seven-two-nine. Ms. Houston, are there any changes?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda? Director Anthony moves, and Director Rosen seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Is there any public comment?
No.
Okay. Any board discussion?
Yes. So I want to thank the individual staff members who I asked questions about the contracts. Just as a general principle, going forward, when we have multi-year contracts, and this is sort of a, a future topic for the, the board, when we have multi-year contracts of how the board provides any sort of oversight of the, the contracts. So for example, last year, or the year before that, there was a six-year contract that was awarded. I mean, there was a whole bunch of them. But annually, when they come back, of whether we're actually looking at whether we're getting the results that we expected. And this is more for service contracts versus like a product or something, but more services. And I just think it's, it's worth a board discussion along with the Deputy Superintendent of Business and Operations about how we sort of tighten up that process. Just looking over the last couple of board meetings, that some of these contracts and the quarterly reports, they're all a little bit different. They're not standardized. It seems like just an efficiency of being able to review them in a consistent way or provide our oversight responsibility, that that would be a useful thing to, for, for us to have in order to be able to look at the contracts and feel comfortable that we're, we know we've, especially if it's multi-year, that what we contracted for in a previous year, we, it was actually delivered before we roll into another fiscal, fiscal year.
We, and we did have that discussion today earlier, just in a, in a smaller group, that, that is the intent, I think, with superintendent. And you can respond to this of, of, you know, when we bolster our ability and program evaluation to really have a template. So Director Brim Edwards said that we are able to compare across our contracts. I agree that that's.
And that's an important point, I think, Julie, because aside from metrics for a given contract, which previously have been set by whomever the contract manager was, but weren't universal even within a certain department, we need that. That's useful, but also the ability to group service contracts under the same initiative. For example, show us in one place all the on-time graduation interventions that we're supporting so that we can really compare results across providers, in addition to being able to see if a, a given contractor has achieved the metrics that we set out in the first place. This is a frustration that we've talked about for a few years in terms of just our own internal processes and templates.
And I think the other thing too is also to look at, you know, numbers and percentages of students across different groups and sort of look at outcomes, graduation rates, and equity around, you know, the percentages of contracts that are going per student groups.
Right.
All music to my ears to hear the directors talk about. These are inherited multi-year contracts. We'd all love to see a standardization of the impact on our investments. And it's going to be a work in progress. And we have a very thin research evaluation department that's, you know, getting smaller by the week. So it's definitely work that, that's a goal for us this year to, to build out more robustly. But maybe you can talk about some of the contracting practices where we can start getting more standardized about.
So we've actually pulled a group together to, this came up, I want to say, a couple of meetings back. And so our procurement staff, as well as our, from our instructional side of the house especially, we've, we're pulling a group together to get a more uniform reporting process so that next year you should be able to see, have comparable data from contract to contract. But in terms of, when you go outside of that instructional program component, then metrics for services may be a little bit more generic than tied directly to student achievement.
I don't, I also want to give the impression, we don't have, we don't exactly have robust student outcome metrics either. So those are indicators we're, I know, very interested in building now, not just for contracts for outside providers, but to, to inform all of our school improvement efforts and interventions, which is something we know through ESO, we're going to have to really start ramping out late this fall for sure.
So I guess, I'm glad to hear it's underway, and we've had several conversations about this. However, we're still moving through and approving contracts with not common templates. So like, for example, unless the new contracts have something different, if you look at the ones from last year, even tonight, two contracts, just very different reporting, like one's pretty thin, or, you know, has, is very data, the other is like much more narrative. So, you know, I guess have concurrent, having concurrent processes of getting the big system sort of improved. But then as we're voting on these individual ones, it would be helpful just to, you know, contract by contract to the extent we can, as we're having to vote on these and until the point in time that the bigger system changes have happened.
It's difficult to go back and ask them to change to different metrics after the year is over, but we are setting it up for a future for eighteen, nineteen contracts.
Yeah, what I meant is the future going, not the, the back.
Right.
But some of these are, say, where our second year into a six-year contract is being, instead of just, you know, keep rolling through the same language to build that in as we're re-upping them as they come through.
Well, and also to get them, I think I got the second contract this afternoon, late this afternoon, the report. So that was difficult. It's really late.
So just, just to clarify that one, sort of in fairness to staff, and I really want to thank Emily for all the work she's done to get it to us. That wasn't included in the pre-ones that we got because it was not a direct negotiation contract. It was a RFP. And the reason why I ask specifically for that is, it's an example of one of these multi-year, it's a six-year contract. And so what sort of annual analysis are we doing? So again, I want to really acknowledge that Emily's been super responsive, and I think that contracts themselves are solid. It's the, we don't have an enterprise contract management system, and then just there's the terms of what the deliverables are.
Thank you for getting it to us. That's.
No problem. I'll pass it on to Emily.
I just have to make a side note that on some of the programmatic services that are being provided, they're, they're oftentimes unique and customized to the school community. And I think that that's part of the reason why we're working with, with these organizations, many of which are culturally specific. So I'm looking out at the audience here at some of our very valued partners for their work with us and, and, you know, to add value there that we certainly want to give confidence to our board of directors that, that these are, these are very wise investments supporting our communities.
Thank you for that.
I, I would like to mention briefly that, like Director Brim Edwards said, we owe a great debt of gratitude to Emily Kortnich, but also frankly, to Mike Rosen. Mike has done a tremendous amount of work on our contracting, and it is infinitely better off now than it was three years ago. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Okay. The, the business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative Pezer voting?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yes, Director Bailey's here. Seven to zero. Thank you. Okay. Board committee and conference reports and student representative report. Do you have a student representative report?
Trying to make it short. So I'd like to say that over the past couple of meetings, the District Student Council, we finally got our social media platform up and running thanks to the communications team. So that's going to be our main way of outreach for a little while and to keep students and PPS parents and staff updated on what, what's going on. So you can follow us at PPS Student Council on Instagram. Yesterday, I spent the entire day in Salem at the State Capitol rallying with Oregon Student Voice. It was a great day to be in there with students from all around the state actually, and be talking about our education and focusing on increasing funding for all districts and like education around the entire state. So that was a great day. And I will be attending the Student Roundtable, as we were talking about earlier on Thursday, the Joint Legislative Committee on Student Success. And I am planning to bring some students from my own school, Cleveland High School. We have a, our care class, a racial equity class at Cleveland. So I'm going to have some students representing that as well, which I'm very excited about. And our next District Student Council meeting is October second at four PM at Benson High School. This is the start of, the beginning of us moving our meetings around the district. So we've got a lot going on.
Thank you. Director Brim Edwards?
So just a brief report from the Policy and Governance Committee. We hadn't met for about three and a half months, but we reconvened the other day. And just want to give everybody a heads up on the board that on the first board meeting in October, we will have several first readings coming to you. We will have the student adult boundaries, although it's going to be renamed, draft policy coming to the board for first reading. I want to thank the legal team and HR helping us put together. This is one of the recommendations coming out of the Whitehurst Report. In addition, we'll have a, the disposition of real property policy, a set of amendments to that. That was work that was started in the FAO Committee. And it didn't come out of the committee bef, and so the amendments that were under consideration at the FAO Committee are, were considered at the committee meeting the other day. So there'll be a new, a newly amended version coming to the board for first reading. In addition, we're going to start a process of looking at policy review of what policies need to be rescinded, if they're duplicative, no longer needed, or they're merged into some other policy. So there's going to be four rescissions coming to the, the board. And those, it's the, it's sort of the reverse of creating a policy. So you have a first reading to rescind it, and then a public comment period, and then a second reading. And then if you vote on it, then the policy is rescinded. And then the last thing that the committee, we, we didn't get to it, but this was an outcome of it, and we'll be sort of tracking it going forward, was when the board adopts a policy, there often is a trailing, either new administrative directive or a modification of administrative directive. So tracking those, so last year, we pranked through about ten to twelve policy changes or new policies. And there's some trailing administrative directives and communications that are, should follow those. So we're going to, we have a matrix that this large created that we'll use as a way to know that, once we have a policy adopted, that there's an AD in the pipeline following that to provide additional guidance.
Anybody else? Director Anthony?
Thank you. There are a couple of things I'd mention. Two weekends ago, the Oregon School Board Association Board met. The only important action item other than just normal housekeeping, which of course is going wonderful because it's the OSBA, and they've got money, is that we are bringing forward to our member school boards a resolution creating a designated board seat and a, a voting board seat for school members, school board members of color. And the board will be voting on that, I expect, in late October. I would strongly encourage a positive vote. Also, last week, Jonathan Garcia, Aurora Terry, and I met with a local financial services company. I'm not going to name them yet, but we are negotiating on bringing a financial literacy curriculum K through twelve to Portland Public. It looks very, very promising, and we are very excited about the potential for our students. And then the last thing is that also last week, I went to a meeting in North Portland that PBOT was putting on. Some of the material was pretty irritating, but some of it related to our schools was very, very good. And one of my continual frustrations over the last fifteen years has been that we are not getting more traffic safety changes made around our school routes and our schools. But some more money, not enough, but some, was shaken out of the legislature. And so over the next two years, we're going to see some significant changes around George Middle School, Cesar Chavez, big changes to the whole length of MLK that are going to be concentrating on pedestrian improvements getting across. And so that's going to have a huge impact on Tubman and on Woodlawn. And some big changes around Boise Elliott, all of which I think are going to be very positive, and I'm really happy to see. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Any other business? Okay, I think we're done. The board will follow this meeting with a work session on career technical education in the Mazama Conference Room. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on October second. This meeting is adjourned.